Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year to you.
Ms. Johnson, we're all set.
Okay. Good evening. The Jackson Public Board Meeting is now called order. Board members, all members are present, therefore, we have a quorum. We've all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
They're moved.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Dr. Harrison has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next on the agenda is the adoption, is the approval of the minutes for December 15th. Nope. The December 15th? Yes, it is December 15th. Board members, we've had an opportunity to review the minutes in advance. Is there a motion to approve the December 15th minutes?
I so moved.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Dr. Harrison has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the minutes are approved. And just that quickly, we've gotten to the superintendent's report. Dr. Green.
Happy New Year to our board members, to the JPS administrators and staff, parents or scholars, to the entire Jackson community. Thank you for joining us via video conference this evening and for your continued support of us to transform Jackson Public Schools and provide excellent education to our children and to families we serve. We'll begin with a video presentation with the latest district news and important updates from our instructional television production team.
Jackson Public Schools will host Smart Restart Drill Days on January 13th and 14th. This will give school personnel and scholars who selected in-person learning for the second semester an opportunity to familiarize themselves with procedures and expectations before they return for in-person learning on January 19th. All school faculty and staff who are not on a work-from-home accommodation will participate in a quarantine period and work from home until the first drill day on January 13th. Smart Restart Drill Days will allow scholars to experience a full practice school day with careful attention given to safety protocols and procedures. Schools will practice the daily activities of a traditional learning school day from arrival to departure with recommended precautions in place. Additionally, schools will use this day to hand out personal protective equipment, books, devices, and other supplies scholars will need for school. The city of Jackson is producing its new comprehensive plan for development, and organizers are seeking input from the public. Planners are seeking participants to complete a survey to help guide the direction of the proposal. In support of the project, Kita Welchlin, a student at JPS Tugulu Early College High School, wrote a poem to encourage public participation in the survey as well. She performs it here.
Jackson, Mississippi, no matter what you may see, neighbors working together as a community feels like we're all family. From soft cell music to R&B at the barbecue cooking all that delicious meat. Meeting new people with friendly hellos, joking and telling stories from years ago, lifting each other up and coming together as one and standing for what we believe, making this town better for the daughters and sons. Our future is bright, no matter how young and old you are, we will all shine a light, a light so bright we will be recognized and we will be identified with great leadership and power. I just know our city will blossom like a flower. Everywhere in my city is home, no matter how far you go. So this is my Jackson, Mississippi, my home sweet home.
To participate in the survey, go to connectjackson.com. That is C-O-N-N-E-C-T-J-X-N.com. Walton Elementary School sends a huge thank you to the Rotary Club of Jackson. The organization helped to make the school's holiday a bit brighter by providing gift cards and supplies to all pre-K teachers and scholars at the school. Thanks again to the Rotary Club of Jackson. The Jackson Public School District is accepting applications for middle school special programs, academic and performing arts, or international baccalaureate through January 31st, 2021. Apply online before 11:59 PM on the deadline. Two of the district's elementary schools will receive new names. The schools are Lee and Power Elementary. Lee, formerly named for Confederate General Robert E. Lee, will be renamed Shirley Elementary School for Doctors Aaron and Ollie Shirley. Dr. Aaron Shirley was the first African-American resident at the University of Mississippi Medical Center in 1965. After becoming a physician, he served as an associate professor of pediatrics at UMMC. Dr. Ollie Shirley, his wife, was a member of the JPS Board of Trustees and also served as the board president. Power Elementary will be renamed for Ida B. Wells. She was an investigative journalist, educator, and civil rights leader. Wells was a native of Holly Springs, Mississippi. Power was originally named for Confederate Army Colonel John Logan Power. The JPS Board of Trustees unanimously approved renaming the schools at its December 15th board meeting. Please read more about these new and noteworthy changes at our website. The lease JPS held with Entergy at Lake Haiko has ended, and now the district is working with the city of Jackson and other entities to determine new uses for the property. Joseph Albright, chief of operations for Jackson Public Schools, gives an update on the plans the district is considering for the area.
Because they are required by the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality to drain the lake, breach the dam, and then test the waters and the silt, and then remediate as necessary, we knew that that was going to take much longer than the lease period, and so they have at least another year with options to be able to continue that work, to restore it to essentially its original condition, which was the term of the lease. JPS is already meeting with the Jackson Reutilization Authority and the city of Jackson to identify potential uses. We're going over previously performed development assessments to determine what types of opportunities are available in this particular area. And once we've done that, then we're going to bring in community groups from not only the Lake Haiko but the Jackson area overall to start talking about what types of recreational or retail, other business-type activities, or residential they would like to see in this particular area.
Sixteenth section land is state-owned property and generates revenue for the benefit of local school districts to offset the need to raise local taxes. The district's official mobile app is now available. Get access to news, the district directory, and much more. Download it on Google Play and the Apple App Store. For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website, visit us on Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, and Comcast Channels 18 and 19.
Thank you to our instructional television team for those updates. As we all know, this is the time of year when we pause and reflect on our lives, on our work, the very existence that we hold, and make resolutions or commitments for improvement in the year ahead. At our last board meeting, Dr. Cormac provided an update on our progress towards our strategic commitments. We're excited to be moving that work along, and especially during a time when there are so many reasons to simply focus in, to narrow the scope, and make excuses for what we can't do. Even during this awful and tragic pandemic that requires daily management of the very urgent issues, Jackson Public Schools is maintaining a focus on our long-term goals of our district's transformation and ensuring amazing outcomes for all of our scholars. I know that we're only halfway through this school year, but like many other school districts across the country, we're in the throes of planning for next year. We're looking critically at the data that we have available to us now. We're looking closely at our plans and the challenges that we've had so far this year. We're taking stock in the changing landscape of education and all of the opportunities that lie ahead. I've said before, and I maintain the notion, that we can't waste this opportunity to seriously reconsider the ways in which we do things and the practices that we've held on to for so many years. As we emerge from this pandemic, and I know we've got a ways to go, but when we do, what we, what do we want to be true about JPS, about our schools, our team, our infrastructure, our curriculum, all of it? What do we want and need to be true so that the radical transformation that we speak of doesn't end up to be simple words? As I wrap up this message, I want to thank the JPS team, our central office, our school-based staff, and our representative groups for all that they're doing to keep us and to help us to envision a new Jackson Public Schools, one that serves all of our scholars and families with excellence. We have much to do, but I'm excited that the things that I'm speaking of today will soon become a part of the new normal in our district. Hang in there, Jackson Public Schools community. For all of the challenges and frustrations, a brighter day is coming. And at some point, even the most cynical of cynics will be able to see what we now see, that there's greatness in this community, and one has to look no further than Jackson Public Schools to see that greatness. We will be coming to you, board members, in the coming months with more specifics around plans for our next year, around our structure, our facilities, our resources, highlighting and tweaking some of the strategic plans that we have in place, just to ensure that everything that we're doing is aligned, that is planful, and it's purposeful, and in the end, that we're delivering on the promises we've made. So I look forward to bringing more of those plans to you. Just want you to know that that's happening even now, as we continue in this year, looking for, looking ahead to the next year. With that, thank you, President Johnson, board members. That concludes my remarks, and I turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Green, for your report, and of course, it's always your thoughtfulness. Now we have public participation. We have one person signed up for public participation. Before we have that, I just want to lay out the set expectations. Community members who would like to make public comment, the way that you do that is you email roswilliams@jackson.k12.ms.us, no later than 5:15 PM on the day of the meeting. Before, also, you will have three minutes for your comments. This board is committed to public comment. We believe it's a very important component of our process. We will listen, we will not comment. If there are any issues that you have not taken action on, please go through your local schools or to district administration. And at this point, we have just a moment.
Ms. Michelle Brassfield.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you for this opportunity. I do have some concerns. One is the virtual learning and returning to school. I thought that it was, it was going to be a traditional return, aside from masks and everything we need to do to protect ourselves from COVID, but I thought it would be, I thought it would not be virtual at school. I'm concerned that the only change is the location and not the style of learning. I have a child who works, I have two children in JPS, and the virtual learning has been challenging for everyone I know, but particularly because sometimes the platform doesn't work as it should. And one daughter, both daughters have submitted work, and it hasn't always gone through. We've experienced having to repeat work multiple times. In addition to that, when we first started, we didn't have access for one child for a month and another for about nine weeks. So that's work that had to be made up, and we're still behind, and we're still trying to play catch-up with this semester. So I'm really concerned. She's done some work through, what's this platform I'm trying to think of? It's not Khan Academy, it's something else, but she tried to submit something tonight and was unable to do that. So I'm concerned. I would really hope that we could get back to maybe doing some things basically on Word or either having some things printed out so that the efforts are not repetitive and also don't create stress in the moment that they're due, like by 11:59. Those are my concerns tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Brassfield.
Thank you.
Board members, next on the agenda is information items only. Ms. Robinson.
Good evening, board members, Board President Johnson, Dr. Green. Each month, we have the pleasure of presenting the bond update to you. Tonight, we'll have covered three things in particular. Phase one and two construction updates. We'll also present the bond financial report and our new communications planning that we've been working with, public engagement. So Ms. Franklin will begin the presentation with the phase one and two construction progress updates. Ms. Franklin?
Good evening, Board President Johnson, Dr. Green, board members. We're stuck with our phase one projects. At Murrah High School, we're moving right along. We have several projects underway. Here on the right, we see our restroom renovations still continuing. We have science lab renovations ongoing at Murrah, and we have an entry walkway replacement that's coming to a close. In the next slide, we see demolition photos in our restrooms at Murrah. The next slide at Murrah is showing how those restrooms are starting to take shape with the porcelain tile and plumbing fixtures starting to be installed. Our next site is Provine High School. Yes, we have several projects going on there also. We're coming, we're wrapping up our restroom renovations at Provine. We have a kitchen plumbing replacement that's ongoing there. Science lab renovations are underway, as well as parking lot repairs. Here we see in the courtyard, it's been torn up quite a bit for some sewer line replacements. Our next slide shows us at the kitchen, we're replacing all of the plumbing underneath the kitchen, as well as a grease trap. We're also replacing all the flooring throughout the cafeteria. Our next slide shows us some of the, some of the parking lot repairs that have been done at Provine. We see on the left, that was a previous pothole. On the right, it's been repaired. At Wingfield High School, we have several projects underway. Our structural repairs project, we see a photo here on the right where we're doing a lot of work underneath the building. We're alleviating some of the water that gets trapped underneath the building, and it's caused some foundation problems. We have science lab renovations that have started at Wingfield. The library renovation has also started there, and we have all new exterior door replacements. At Capital City, we have two projects underway. Our site drainage and foundation repair project is coming to a close. We see here on the left, some old planters that have been neglected. They've been cleaned out, and just kind of give a refresh to this area of the school. Also at Capital City, our second project that's ongoing are restroom renovations. We, we see here the demolition. In our next slide, we'll see how those restrooms are starting to take shape with our, the porcelain tile has been installed, and the plumbing fixtures are being installed as we speak. Our next site at Lanier High School, we have several projects ongoing there. Here we see photos of the restrooms starting to receive some improvements. We also have science labs being renovated at Lanier, and we also have an exterior facade upgrade, which also includes all new exterior doors. Our next school, Jim Hill. At Jim Hill, we have several projects. We see her on the right. This is our gymnasium. It's received all new gym floors. The gym will also receive new bleachers. The restrooms are being renovated at Jim Hill. The science lab renovations have started, and the library renovation is coming up soon. Next, we have Callaway High School. We have about three projects going on at Callaway. This is part of the largest project at Callaway. It includes replacing the roof on all three buildings, as well as replacing all the HVAC and on all three buildings. And these are some of the items that we don't see every day. We don't, you know, they're, they're aren't visible in the hallways or the classrooms, but it's just all the infrastructure that goes into place and helps to run all of our new lighting, all of our new HVAC. Callaway's received two new chillers, two new boilers, new switchgear, multiple electrical panels, four new transformers. It's also received two new sump pumps. And those are things that, like I said, we don't see those things as we're walking through the hallways or in the classrooms, but we definitely feel those things if they're not working properly. Next, at Callaway, we see here, Callaway's also received all new windows throughout all three buildings. We see on the left, the windows were rusty and deteriorating. They allowed a lot of air, as well as water in. They didn't close properly. On the right, we see all new windows and also new egress windows, which were a part of our MDE requirement. This is at Forest Hill High School. We've talked about Forest Hill in our past updates. We've seen all the other projects, but here, this is a new one that started. This is our library renovation. And here we see the demolition of the library here at Forest Hill. It's going to completely revamp this space. The next photo shows us some additional demolition in that library. It's a large space, and it's going to be, like I say, a total facelift to the library at Forest Hill. Lastly, one of our elementary schools in phase one, Green Elementary School. We see here on the left how we started with the restrooms, the demolition, and those restrooms are wrapping up also, just in time for students to come back. We see all the tile partitions, and all the fixtures have been installed at Green Elementary School. Next, Ms. Robinson will give us an update on our financial report.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. And board members, I'm sure you're excited to see all of those pictures that we shared, and there are many more to share. At the November 5th, 2020 board meeting, we presented a new format for the financial update. This format is what we, what we will be using going forward. It lists the school or this particular slide, site, the budget for that school, the expenditures, the encumbered amounts, and the budget balance. Since I did explain this format at the, at the previous board meeting, I'm not going to go into detail, but the next two slides gives the continuation of this format. So in the budget amount, it does give all the allocation for that school, which includes science labs and library renovation. So you can go to the next slide. Okay, again, this is a continuation showing the allocated funds for each school. The next slide. And to get, at the bottom of this, when it gives the total allocation, and then it shows the total expenditures, the encumbered amounts, and the budget balance. The next slide is the one that I'm going to emphasize. It's a, gives the same information in a circle graph. So... So the amount expended is show, is shown in orange, and at this point, we have expended about 25% of the bond revenue. The gray shows the amount encumbered, and we've expended about, encumbered about 17%. And then we still have about 57% unencumbered. But compared to the last bond update, we have increased from 40% to 42% from the amount expended and encumbered. This week, we do anticipate that we're going to be able to issue P purchase orders almost in the amount of $3.6 million, which will bring our encumbered and expended amount up to 48%. So we're making tremendous progress, and within the, within the next month, we do anticipate awarding some additional projects. Next slide. One thing that we've been working with the public engagement team is to better communicate what the progress we have been doing beyond just the bond updates that we're providing at the board meeting. Three things that we've emphasized are social media school of the week highlight, videotapings of the construction progress, and project updates on each school's webpage. The next slide gives the, an example of the social, social media school of the week highlights that we started. So each week, we're going to post on, on a Friday, we predict, we'll pick a particular school. So far, we've posted for Lanier, Callaway, and Green. So the example that we have right here on the right shows the posting on January 1st for Green, and it lists, again, some of the pictures showing the restroom renovations, and also lists some pictures of the exterior improvements. The next slide gives an overview of the videotapings. So we want to not just do still photos, but we want to have some live shots in action. So before the winter break, Ms. Franklin and I were able to tape with ITV staff at Provine, CDC, Wingfield, Capital City, Van Winkle, and Forest Hill. ITV staff is currently editing that taping, and they will start airing on January 19th. We will begin taping for the next set of schools. That includes Boyd, Callaway, Casey, Green, Jim Hill, Lanier, Murrah, and Span within the next two weeks, and we anticipate those to be aired before the end of the month. The final way that we're improving our communications is through project updates that will be listed on the school's webpage. This gives an example of Green Elementary School. It shows the project listing of the projects that were designated for Green on the original bond fact sheet. As you see in the yellow, it gives that two projects are currently under construction, but looking at that green, it shows five projects that are, that have been completed. So we're happy about the progress that we're making at Green. In addition to this checklist format of the, of what's occurring at the school, we'll also show pictures. And the next slide shows the pictures that will accompany this checklist. So we'll show similar in, as we do in the bond update, before and after pictures. So we see some before and after pictures of the door replacement, of the painting, the railings that has been, that have been done, and also the classroom renovations and restroom renovations. So this is just one additional way that we're making sure that students know that during COVID, work is proceeded and that we're preparing the schools for the students to come back to us. So this concludes the bond update for today. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Board members, any questions? Comments?
It's exciting to see those images and those pictures. I'm grateful for all of that good work, and I'm just excited to see the progress that's being made and hopeful about all the future progress. So thanks to you and to all of the team for the good work y'all are doing.
Thank you.
And I like...
Aye.
I appreciate that too.
Okay. No, Ms. Thompson?
No, I was just saying, I appreciate the, the hard work that's being done, and also the whole social media aspect in the videos so that it... the whole um, social media aspect in the videos so that it uh, um, and the community, the meetings like these, if they attend these meetings, they will be great because they are always so very informative. So I appreciate the hard work you all.
Ms. Hilliard?
Uh-huh, thank you. Um, I just wanted to say that's such an outstanding report to uh, Ms. Robinson, Ms. Franklin. And I really appreciate it and it is the kind of report that um, even a person who knows nothing about all of this architectural information can relate to, be knowledgeable of what is going on. So just wanna say, continue the great work that you all are doing.
Dr. or uh, President Johnson and um, board members, if I may, just wanna ask either Ms. Robinson or um, Mr. Albright to speak to the uh, additional efforts that we're making to ensure that there's greater clarity on and um, and I guess intentionality for when the projects are, are coming to you, board members, and, and how we're just ensuring that we're gonna move things forward to complete by the end of the calendar year.
Yes, Dr. Green. So we've prepared, and I think we shared in December, and we need to issue a revised copy, um, a matrix showing all the um, additional Phase Two and Three projects and showing when they'll be coming to the board for action and then showing um, when, when they'll be completed. And we project that we will be able to complete all of the projects by November, December 2021, which is the end of the bond. So there um, uh, schools that are already advertising right now, that will be able to come to the board later um, the first weekend in February's for approval. And we have, we will have multiple projects. So we, we work closely with IMS um, as far as getting um, the schedules down. We're doing uh, weekly meetings with the design firms to make sure that um, we are knowledgeable upfront of any problems and so that it, it will reduce the number of change orders on the backend. So we're really working as a team with the facilities uh, and operations supervisors to know what our infrastructure needs um, and being really intentional and working with principals as well to say, uh, what are your needs? So um, it's been a, a team effort and uh, we are really committed to uh, ensuring that these projects are gonna come and um, be completed by the end of the bond.
I appreciate that. I, I didn't say, but I should also prompt any comments that you have on, you know, the fact that we're bringing young people back and, and um, we'll have more people in the buildings and just managing between um, young people and staff members being in buildings and the kind of uptick in projects that are being completed in buildings. How are you managing through that?
Yes, sir. So um, we had, um, during the Christmas break, a lot of projects did um, um, rev up, trying to have as much demolition done as possible, in particular, library renovation projects, so that we, we will have a clean environment when students return. Um, contractors will begin shifting between a night and a weekend um, project schedule. Um, we uh, won't have that ability to do, you know, the massive work that we were during the day, but we are working with contractors and um, our design professionals to shift work both to um, nights and weekends. And we are, we're already projecting for what um, is gonna start work um, um, start um, construction, you know, June 1st. So we're gonna be very focused uh, on this summer uh, for projects and planning ahead. And then also work with principals on some things that may be able to, to be completed um, between now and um, and the end of May.
Thank you for providing that additional feedback.
Board members, any other questions or comments? If not, we will move on to Attorney Robinson.
Happy New Year. The Office of the General Counsel is recommending that the Jackson Public Schools Board of Trustees adopt its recommendations related to the, either the creation, amendment, or removal of three board policies. The first policy is Policy IDF. It relates to the district's assurances for children with disabilities and it is an amendment to a current policy. The second policy is IJBD, Responsible Use of District-Issue Technology, and that is a new policy. And the final policy is ILE, Student Purchase of District-Issue Technology. And that is a recommendation for the deletion of that policy. I'll start with IDF. As an initial matter, the amendments proposed by the Office of the General Counsel to this policy are recommended in accordance with the Mississippi School Board Association Policy Service recommendations to account for the procedural safeguards and other requirements under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, commonly referred to as IDEA. Additionally, the existence of this policy is required by federal law. The Office of the General Counsel has recommended the amendment of this policy to comport with these requirements as articulated by the Policy Service. And I'm happy to address any questions of the board related to these recommendations at this time.
Any questions, board members? Doesn't look like there's a, oh. Ms. Dr. Seadeck has a question.
Sure.
Uh, thanks, President Johnson. Um, Attorney Robinson, uh, are you going through each of the policies?
I am, and I wanna stop because IDE, IDF um, posed some questions on the backend and I wanna address the questions policy by policy instead of waiting to the end.
Okay, great. I have no questions.
Okay, thank you.
Attorney Robinson, I, I did have a question about IDF and that issue of uh, students re, reaching the age of 21, but I know we are in the information only stage. So, I mean, we can talk offline on that. It's just a minor point. If, go on and raise it up now, okay? Okay, now, my question was um, in IDF Section 1 states that a 20-year-old student enrolled in the district at the beginning of the school year would continue to receive services even if he reaches his, her 21st birthday before school was out, which I think is good. But my question is about Section 2 that follows. It says Mississippi law does not allow public schools to provide educational opportunities to students with disabilities over the age of 20. So um, is that a conflict there or?
The short answer is yes, that's a conflict, but that conflict is permissible under both Mississippi Department of Education regulations as well as federal law. Um, in my responses to the questions that were po, were posed prior to the meeting, I referenced uh, 34 CFR 30102, which is the federal regulations that govern IDEA. And it provides that the regulations that govern IDEA allow a state to not have an obligation to provide FATE, which is a free, appropriate public education, if so doing would violate state law. The language of Section 1 permits us essentially to comply with state law because the student is 20 at the time that they're receiving services. And it provides us with a mechanism to not simply cut off access to FATE merely because they turn 21 during the academic year. It's also important to note that IDEA, as a federal kind of regulation and law, allows school districts to provide a free, appropriate public education through 21. Um, I believe that the con, the policy containing both uh, both statements help to provide the context within which we would not be violating Mississippi law by continuing to offer services to a student who has turned 21.
The link is in the group somewhere and I'll also drop, drop it in the chat or someone else can drop it in the chat.
Great. That's helpful. So you, so you've presented language that is most flexible and most advantageous to us without violating state or federal law.
Yes, Dr. Harrison.
Okay, thank you so much. Oh, yes, and yeah, that's fine. That was the only remaining question I had about IDEA. Thank you.
Thank you. I will continue with IJBD, the Responsible Use of District-Issue Technology policy. Uh, we recommend the adoption or of the creation of this particular policy. This policy is required under state law pursuant to Senate Bill 3044. And that's really related to funding the district has received in order to purchase equipment for scholars, technology for scholars that may have been purchased under that state law provision. We're required to have a policy that governs the use of that technology. Um, we also do have an example of what the fixed ac, asset form would be signed by the parent. Um, that is contained in the district's current procedures and can be provided as a addendum to this policy. Any questions related to IJBD?
Right, thank you. That's very helpful because, you know what? We get questions from the community often and I just wanted to uh, be sure. So that's good. And we will, board members can see whatever parents have to sign, assignment of success. Yeah, just out of curiosity, so when somebody asks me why we have to sign this, then I'll have an answer and I'll know what they're talking about.
Yes, ma'am. I, I did, I was able to locate that document and sent it via email.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Yes, Dr. Harrison. Okay, now I will talk about Policy ILE, Student Purchase of District-Issue Technology. It's my understanding that the district recently adopted this policy pursuant to the allowance under state law in January of 2019. The Office of the Chief Operations Officer, in collaboration with the Executive Director of Federal Programs, upon further review, have recommended that we rescind this policy. And the primary reason for rescinding a recommendation, the recommendation to rescind the policy is many of the devices that are purchased um, that our scholars are utilizing right now have been purchased with federal dollars, not state dollars. And to authorize the sale at any price point of those, that equipment would violate the, the, the regulations related to the use of those federal dollars. So we are proposing that the board rescind this policy so that we will not violate federal law as it relates to the use of that, that money. In addition, even if that was not, you know, the most significant consideration, an additional consideration is, I think we, we've issued potentially 1,500 devices to our senior students. How many, higher, a larger number than that? Thousand, okay. So, my apologies. Um, thinking practically, if we were to allow the sale of 15,000 computers for $1 or 1,500 computers for $1, the, the benefit to the district wouldn't allow us to purchase one computer for additional scholars that are coming in. So for these reasons, we recommend that the policy is rescinded. I'm happy to entertain any additional questions in collaboration with Chief Albright and all others who might have additional information that can shed light on this particular policy.
No further questions or comments, board members?
Excuse me, Madam President. Attorney Robinson, I did have one more question on um, IJBD. I'm so sorry, I couldn't read my own notes. But Section 9 states that um, when we place our JPS students may be placed in private schools by an agency and that JPS bears the cost of that placement. Uh, do we know how many scholars, say for instance, this year or maybe last year, if we have the data?
There were 60 scholars, uh, based on information provided by Dr. Bingham-Gibbs that attend private schools and are receiving speech-language services. 67, excuse me.
Okay. And we, we but, we plan and budget for this every year, I imagine. So we've got funds to carry this.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, to meet the requirements of IDEA, we are, we're obligated to extend a proportionate share of federal IDEA funds. And this is thinking more about the private school placement at public expense component. We're obligated to essentially set aside those funds in the event they have to be utilized for our students.
Okay, great. Okay, so that also includes the, the placement in private schools by a parent?
Yes.
Because this Section 11 says that we have to be sure and as we would, I'm not in any way arguing with this, but I just wanna understand it, that uh, provision will be made for their participation in other activities carried out. So here again, we've got funds allocated, set aside to meet this particular expectation requirement of law.
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I apologize for having to go back.
No, thank you. And I, no, no problem. And I also wanna give a shout out to Dr. uh, to Latham Bingham-Gibbs for assisting me with the response to that question.
Great, thank y'all so much, Dr. Bingham. Thank you. I'm done, thanks.
Board members, any other questions or comments? If not, we can move on to um, information action items. Ms. Charleston?
Thank you.
Uh, good evening. I will be uh, representing Dr. Charleston uh, this evening. Madam President, uh, Dr. Green, other members of the board. Uh, the recommendation of, for the approval for the destruction of cumulative folders is being presented as an information item this evening. Uh, the Office of Records uh, under the umbrella of the Division of uh, Data and Accountability, is uh, seeking to initiate uh, the discarding of cumulative folders uh, for years prior to and to include uh, the 2010 through uh, 2011 academic year. Uh, the process is to be uh, executed according to the guidelines of the Mississippi Cumulative Folders and Permanent Records Manual of Directions, uh, District Board Policy JCF, and Mississippi Code 3715-3, which permits the cumulative folder to be destroyed by order of the school board of the school district in not less than five years after the permanent record of the student has become inactive and has been transferred to central depository of the district. Now, the Office of Records uh, will adhere to the following caveats. The discarding process will be gradual. Uh, no cumulative folder will be destroyed until it has been visually inspected and meets the criteria for discarding. No cumulative folder uh, can be destroyed without the existence of an accompaniment uh, permanent record. The cumulative folder, along with all, along with any other classified documents, will be shredded by a professional uh, shredding company. And finally, the cumulative folder can only be destroyed via the Office of Records. If there are any questions, I'll be more than happy to uh, address them at this time.
Board members, any comments or questions? If not, thank you, Mr. Holland. Next, board members, we have the-
President Johnson.
Madam President, that was an action item.
I would-
Oh.
We uh, accept that recommendation and approve that action item.
Thank you, Mr. Luckett. Um, is there a second?
Second.
I second. Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There being none, the motion has um, been approved. Thank you, Dr. Luckett. I just skipped that completely. Next, now we have the Consent agenda items finance. All of the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously. We've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any other questions on the consent agenda items finance? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items finance?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Um, Dr. Harrison has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Now, board members, we have the consent agenda items personnel. All of these items have had, we've had an opportunity to review them previously. Are there any further questions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I still move. For the approval of the personnel items.
Second, madam.
Ms. Hilliard has motioned and Mr. Figures has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Is there a consideration to hold an executive session? Do we have anything? There is no consideration to hold an executive session. So we have come to the close of our meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I couldn't.
Hold on one second. We're going to pull that motion back.
Hello, I'm sorry. We we haven't introduced formally introduced our board members, our new scholar.
Oh, okay.
Were on the line. So I just wanted to acknowledge that they were here.
Okay.
I've been texting my people and asking, did I miss something or do we need to do this?
Okay, so do we know who we have on the line? Is anyone that can make those introductions for us?
Yes.
If she's available, Ms. Marshall Thomas, if she's available to acknowledge them.
Yes, sir, I am. I'm actually pulling our list up now.
Thank you.
No problem.
Sorry, board members. I just, I didn't want to lose this opportunity to welcome these amazing young people.
Okay, everyone, I'm not sure if all of them are on the call, but I will introduce them in their corresponding schools. For Callaway High School, we have Sami Nick Blackman. And if Sami Nick is on the call, she can just, everybody can just answer present. Callaway High School, Sami Nick Blackman. Forest Hill High School, EJasia Adams. Lanier High School, Amiracle Johnson. Jimmy. Okay, great. Hi, Miracle. Jim Hill High School, Essence Byrd.
I'm present, ma'am.
Murra High School, Farah Jensen.
I am present.
Probon High School, Chantey Braddock. Wingfield High School, Eduardo Hernandez. And the JPS Tuglu Early College High School, Ethan Thomas.
I'm present.
Thank you all for for joining us tonight. And board members and Dr. Green, those are eight school board student representatives for the 2021 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall Thomas, and thank you again, board members, for your indulgence. Just want to again acknowledge just these amazing young people who have signed on and have been selected to represent their their peers from their schools. And I'm told that they will begin making presentations in a rotation schedule, rotating schedule starting next board meeting. So again, just welcome scholars. We're so pleased to have you and I'm so proud of you.
And from the board, also welcome. Were they at the last board meeting? Because I was absent. Okay. Okay. So I think we had a motion. If we could bring that motion back up again.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Second. Dr. Luckett has motioned to adjourn. Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, this ends our meeting.